Good evening. My name is Dan Larson. I'm Chair of the Wheat Ridge City Planning Commission. I'd like to thank you all for joining us tonight. Before we begin, here are a few notes about our meeting format. Tonight, we have planning commissioners, planning department staff, and members of the public attending in person. Based on latest public health order from Jefferson County, we are asking commissioners and all those attending in person to wear a face mask during the meeting. Please do not remove your mask when speaking, and remember to speak directly and clearly into the microphone. We are also broadcasting this meeting for viewers on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. Members of the public who are not present and wish to make comments may participate virtually by joining through Zoom, either on a device or by calling in. The Zoom meeting information is provided on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. When it is time for a public comment, and there are two public comment periods tonight, we will first call on those who wish to speak in person, followed by anyone attending the meeting online and speaking through our Zoom connection. If you are speaking online tonight, please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to participate by speaking, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. We appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting. We hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. I would now like to call to order the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission meeting for November 18th, 2021. May I get a roll call of the members, please?
Jaheen Simbi.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Melissa Antle.
President.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Daniel Larson.
The next item on the agenda is the Pledge Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is approving the order of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of tonight's agenda? Are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Motion approved, six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we will approve, we will vote to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting on October 21st, 2021?
I move that we approve the minutes from October 21st, 2021.
Call for a vote. Thank you. We will now open the general interest public forum segment of our agenda. This is a time for any person to speak on a subject that is not on tonight's agenda. If you plan to speak on one of the items on tonight's public hearing agenda, please wait until the hearing for that item. All speakers are asked to limit their speeches to three minutes, and speakers may not donate their time. If you plan to speak, please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. Is there anyone signed up to speak in the general interest forum?
No one has signed up in person, and the only people joining us on Zoom right now are part of the applicant team.
Thank you. Is there anyone signed, anyone who wishes to speak on our Zoom connection, please raise your hand.
We're good. Everybody's from the applicant team, so nobody tonight.
Okay, thank you. If there is anyone else in the public who would like to speak on any subject not on tonight's agenda, please speak now. Hearing none, I will close the general interest public forum. Moving on to our public hearings, there were originally two items on our public hearing case list for tonight. The first was to be case number WZ-21-12, a zone change request for property at 9605 West 38th Avenue. That case has been rescheduled to December 16th. The hearing date will be republished with posting sign and letter notice. No motion or further action is required at this time. Our second public hearing case tonight is case number WS-21-10, an application filed by Second Chance Homes for approval of a zone change from commercial one, C1, to mixed-use commercial, MU-C, for property located at 12100 West 44th Avenue. I'd like, again, to welcome members of the public to our hearing. It is important that this hearing be conducted in a dignified and civil manner. Our goal, as always, is to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. We start all public hearings with a presentation from staff, and in some cases, a presentation by the applicant. After the presentations, the commission will ask questions of staff and the applicant, and then we will invite members of the public for their comments during the citizens forum. So let's start with this staff presentation.
Hi. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Stephanie Stevens. I'm a planner in the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting case number WZ-21-10, which is a request for approval of a zone change from C1 to, from commercial one to mixed-use commercial at 12100 West 44th Avenue. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met. Therefore, the planning commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject property is outlined on the screen in red. The property is located at the southeast corner of Van Gordon Street and West 44th Avenue. West 44th Avenue is one of Wheat Ridge's main east-to-west arterials, with the 44th Avenue subarea planning process slated to move forward in 2022. The I-70 interstate is nearby to the north. The corridor acts as a transition from I-70 and the residential and agricultural uses to the south. The interstate has recently been upgraded, including new ramps associated with Clear Creek Crossing, which is far off to the west of the screen, completing safety improvements and improving pedestrian and bicycle crossings. This kind of public investment can help catalyze improvements to a corridor, and the proposed zone change encourages corresponding private investment. The property currently has one access point off of West 44th Avenue and two access points from Van Gordon Street on the west. It consists of four lots, about, it's about 2.8 acres in size. It contains a hotel built in 1985, which is currently operating as a Howard Johnson. There's a restaurant component on the ground floor, which is currently vacant. The properties along the portion of West 44th Avenue are in commercial, mixed-use, residential, and agricultural zone districts, and primarily contain commercial uses, including a truck stop across the street. Tabor Lake borders the site to the south. The site is currently zoned C1 and is primarily surrounded by commercial uses along West 44th Avenue. Hotels are considered special uses in the C1 Zone District. This hotel specifically is considered legally non-conforming since a special use permit was not required at the time that it was actually developed. Residential uses are not permitted in the C1 Zone District. Therefore, a zone change is required in order to allow a conversion of the hotel into a residential use. The project aims to generate workforce housing to serve the Wheat Ridge area, with potential for small-scale retail along West 44th in the future. This is a view of the subject property looking south from West 44th Avenue. And here's a, and here's a better view of the existing building. The applicant would like to reuse the existing building and convert it to residential for workforce housing. The purpose of the zone change is to result in a zoning that could support, that could support the goals set forth in the city's comprehensive plan and accommodate uses that are more in line with the surrounding area and market conditions. 44th Avenue is known to have a disparate mix of uses and lack of private property investment. Along the corridor and the comprehensive plan acknowledges this with goals and strategies that promote neighborhood revitalization. By way of the 44th Avenue subarea planning process that's coming up in 2022, the city will also be reassessing land uses to help promote the revitalization and attract investment while maintaining the character. Based on the existing character and land use patterns along 44th Avenue, the MUC Zone District is appropriate and complementary to surrounding uses, and the zoning itself supports reinvestment. The table on the screen compares the development standards between C1 and MUC Zone Districts. MUC and C1 districts have similar development standards, with the primary differences being height and uses that are allowed. The C1 district allows a wide range of commercial, including office, general business, and retail sales and service establishments. In contrast, MUC allows for residential uses, commercial uses, or a combination of the two. This property is within the 44th and Ward Urban Renewal Area, which is exempt from the city's charter, the city charter's height and density limitations, which means that it could exceed 21 units per acre, and the MUC Zone District would establish the maximum height. The design standards for MUC are stricter than for other zones, including setbacks, landscape buffers, and architecture. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on September 14th, 2021 in a Zoom meeting format. We had seven members of the public attend the meeting, and notes from that meeting are included in the staff report. No major issues were expressed regarding the proposed zone change. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. No comments were received by phone, by email, by mail, or on Wheat Ridge Speaks. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive plan, this property is designated as a neighborhood commercial corridor and neighborhood buffer. It serves as a transition between I-70 and commercial properties along 44th to residential neighborhoods to the south. Stated goals in the comprehensive plan that support this request are to encourage neighborhood revitalization, diverse by housing options, promote reinvestment in the property, and to promote a mix of neighborhood-supporting uses, including residential use and small-scale retail use. The zone change is also supported by the goals and objectives of the 44th and Ward Urban Renewal Plan, which identifies a need for redevelopment, which would promote greater and reasonable economic utilization of the land. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns in the area, the MUC Zone District is most compatible in terms of allowed land uses and would support the need for reinvestment along the corridor. MUC zoning will support compatibility between future redevelopment and existing land uses, and will likely add value to the surrounding areas by supporting reinvestment. Staff finds a zone change to MUC is supported by the city's comprehensive plan, specifically the vision for commercial corridors and reinvestment in commercial properties, and by aligning the zoning with the city's housing goals. Planning Commission will recommend a decision to city council, who will also review the zone change request. If council approves the request, then the zone change is approved. That concludes my presentation. Myself and the applicant are available for questions. The applicant will not be giving a presentation, but we are both here for questions. Thank you.
We'd now like to poll the commissioners for questions. We ask commissioners to hold their comments until after the public forum. And we will start on my right with Commissioner Kearns.
Yeah, I have a question about the lake behind the property and trail access. It, it looks like there might be a trail around this lake, and it also, there's, I believe, the Clear Creek Trail behind the lake. So does this property have any trail access to the lake? Is that, is, could there, could there come one? And, and what about access to the Clear Creek Trail?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that the trail access would come from Van Gordon, so not immediately between the two properties, the private property and the lake, but just, just down that street where the hotel is located can get you to the trail around the lake, which you're right, is interconnected as a part of the city's Clear Creek Green Belt.
Okay, so the Van Gordon Street ends at the trail access to the Clear Creek Trail.
There's a, yeah, I don't know that it's super formalized, but I know that there is, is, is a way to get onto the trail that goes around the lake from there.
Okay.
I don't think it's paved, but it is there.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Lille. Commissioner Disney.
So my, I guess my question is kind of twofold. I noticed that the amount of rent that they're anticipating they'll charge seems high for people who might be considered employed in a workforce situation. So how will they determine that's who's renting from them? I wasn't clear on how that was going to work.
I'll turn that one over to the applicant, if that's okay, Mark Nemger.
Just as a point of record, it's not specifically related to the zone change request, but we'll certainly ask for some clarification. The rents that were noted in the neighborhood meeting are definitely below market rate in Wheat Ridge. There was an affordable housing study session with city council on Monday, and they shared, and we can provide a lot of the percentage that can go towards rent for different AMI, annual median income levels, and sort of what our averages are in Wheat Ridge. So they seem high, but they're actually on the lower end of what we're seeing right now. If you want to speak to your renters or tenants, and we can also unmute your colleagues if that, if you'd like.
Sure, yeah. Good evening, planning commission members. My name is Mark Nemger. I'm with Plan Mark Design, 1085 Locust Street in Denver. I would like to turn this over to Eric, who I believe has chimed in. He's the one who's actually putting these projects together in a number of Colorado communities and knows kind of those exact rent numbers more than I do.
Great. Eric, you should be able to speak. I saw that you've unmuted yourself. If you don't mind giving your name, spelling your last name, and giving your address.
Yep. Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Eric Bogard. That's B as in Bravo, O-O-G-A-A-R-D as in Delta. And my address is 2732 Elk Stone Court, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80908. And then as far as just speaking to the rents, as far as we state workforce housing, you know, at the end of the day, the rents that we're going to be charging is going to be determined by the market. They will be market rate rents. When we say workforce housing, probably the best way to explain that is to look at, if you look at existing ways of bringing new housing to the market, especially in the multifamily arena, you have, you know, new construction. That new construction from the private sector is going to always usually have the high-end finishes and be at the very top of the market, which is usually, that's, say, going to be your white-collar, kind of young professionals renting from there. The other way of bringing new, new product to the market is going to be through more of a government subsidized, deed-restricted. Those deed-restricted ones tend to be more in the 30 to 60 AMI. And for us, something we're actually really excited about with our project is we see there actually being a big gap out there between that 60 AMI to, call it 100 to 120 AMI. And there's really no solutions to bringing any housing to that part of the market. And that tends to be, you know, the teachers, the policemen, the nurses, the people serving us in the community. And that's really kind of exciting for us. The niche we get to fill is we could bring, by converting this hotel to an apartment building, that's our expected tenant base. But like I said, it will be determined at market rent. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Antle.
I just have maybe a question clarification for Lauren and Stephanie. So in here, it's kind of clarifying the max building height within the MUC, because it says four stories for single-use building, six stories for a mixed-use building. And then up at the top of page three, it sounds like this zone change, I mean, this project is just going to convert the existing hotel to apartments, and then in the future, they'll have a commercial frontage. So are they limited to that 62 height because it's only a single use for that building?
Yes, that's correct. It's per, per building. So if it were a mixed-use building, then it could go to the higher.
To 90, okay. So even though the zone permits it, the restored, what is it called, Howard Johnson, will only be 62 feet?
Well, and the maximum heights are only applied in new construction. So anything that is existing, sort of anywhere in the city, an existing building that may, is, may, if, if this building is taller than that, it's considered legally non-conforming. But we don't ever ask an existing building to get modified. You know, zoning lasts a long time, so we want you to be aware of what new development could look like in case these guys walked away or in the future they change it. Those would be the heights that would limit a new building.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of that. And what's the height now?
I don't know that.
It's, building height right now is 47 and a half feet.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Simbi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the applicant, maybe Mr. Bogard or Nemger. I hope I am saying your name correctly, Mr. Nemger. I'm really mostly interested in Second Chance Homes. You said you'd done some similar work in different areas around the state. I went to look online. I didn't see a lot. So could you just give me more information about what Second Chance Homes is as a business?
Yeah, I'd like to turn that over to Eric.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to that. So my partner and I, we've been in real estate for quite a long time, over 20 years for my partner, mainly in the multifamily arena. A little over a decade for myself. We've really done and touched a lot of different areas of real estate, primarily in the investing side. Really, in the last year and a half, as really kind of after COVID hit, we were just kind of seeing the need for housing coming up. And so that's when we started our first project in Colorado Springs, Colorado. We, so you got the, that one only required a change of use, and we got that done in March of this year. We are pretty far along in the construction phase. We expect the first units to be available come January, completing the project, probably in that March timeframe. That was an older building, so it did need a good bit more work than this project than we anticipate on this project. Our second project is in Pagosa Springs. That one, we just closed on this week, actually, but we are pretty through a lot of the steps required by the city, including a density bonus requirement. We should be submitting our permitting this week and plan to start construction on that one in December timeframe, if everything goes well. And my partner, he, we've also got one in Glenwood Springs, and that's just in the process of going through the change of use and working with the city at this point in time.
And, and you also have, do you have properties or conversion projects in Fountain and in Pueblo?
So the Fountain property was a multifamily unit that we owned several years back. That was more of a, we bought a apartment building that was in poor condition and improved the condition and rented it up. So that was not a conversion. But that was one that we owned together. Yeah. The Pueblo one, I'm, I don't have one in Pueblo. If you want to unmute Stuart, I'm not sure if he's had one project down there.
Stuart, if you're wanting to talk, if you've done me, there you go.
Sure. And can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so yeah. And in, so Fountain, you know, on the way to Pueblo. I've also done a couple deals there in the past that were purchasing distressed bank-owned properties, properties in receivership, and doing the same thing, you know, what Eric was talking about. You know, revitalizing those, just getting them back into good, you know, just livable condition for people. As far as Pueblo, I do not own anything down there. I've brokered deals that are workforce housing up to 220 units there. I do own 24 units down in Colorado City that are all workforce housing down there. And yeah, I think Eric covered it pretty well for the rest of it.
Okay, thank you.
Stuart, can we get the spelling of your last name and your address, please?
Sure. Spelling my last name is slow. It's S as in Sam, L-O-A-T as in Tom. My address is 2211 North Corona Street, Colorado Springs, Colorado, 80907.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
Sure, thank you.
Commissioner Simbi, was there a follow-up? Thank you. I, I do have a couple of questions for the applicant. First, has the property actually been transferred yet?
Yes, we closed on the property last week.
I'm sorry, when?
We purchased or closed on the property last week.
Last week, thank you. And it, the, the application says that you are looking to turn a building that has, that had, right now has 108 rooms in it, into a, a building with 100 rooms. Can you describe a little bit of the process that you go through when you're converting a building such as this? How much of the rooms will be redone? Will there be any additional work inside? Is it just a matter of putting a coat of paint on the wall? What sort of renovation will you be doing?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start, and then I'll allow Stuart to jump in. So first, and I'll speak from my experience in the Colorado Springs project. So we, we have an architect that we work with. And so the first thing that she's already done is we go through and we create a as-is drawings for the whole building. Then we've already walked the building with the architect and kind of get an initial idea as far as what the architect and kind of get an initial idea as far as what, what we think the best layouts be. And then we give it over to her and her team, and they start to go through and do the layout. Our goal is to bring the building to its highest and best use. In this building specifically, as far as going from that hundred and eight units, we're actually targeting probably around ninety-five units. The south side of the building that faces the lake, those units are, those rooms right now are a little bit smaller than the rooms on the north side of the building. So we've decided to combine those rooms into one-bedrooms. I believe there's already, I forget the exact number, I think there's eight that previous owners have already combined two rooms into one larger room. And so that side of the building, it is our plan to make those all into one-bedrooms. The units on the north side of the building, they seem to be large enough, from talking with our architect, that we're going to leave those as studio units. And then some of the common area, that's kind of up to our architect right now, but we'd like to convert those or take that common area and try to get some larger units out of, you know, maybe a couple two-bedrooms or additional one-bedrooms there. And that would include some of the restaurant area. Below the restaurant, there looks to be, it's mainly been used for storage. At one point in time, it looked like it might have been some type of club or disco or bar or something, actually. But one thing we are planning on doing down in that area is putting in small storage units, since, especially with the studios, since a, you know, studio apartment is a bit on the smaller side. We do, we have found in our, or planning on doing this on our other projects, and lots, it really kind of is building-dependent. We want to have, make that available when we can, as far as addition, additional opportunity for the tenants if they need storage for bikes and stuff like that. As far as upgrades to the property, a lot of that's going to be determined by the condition of the building, which is going to be, once our architect, engineering team, and contractor get into it, we'll see to the exact extent. But a lot of it is bringing it up to code where needed. Like I speak, our current project in Colorado Springs, you know, one example, we had to literally rewire the building from the street to the room. This is a newer building, so we're not anticipating that need, but we will more than likely have to bring some additional electrical from breakers on each floor level to the rooms. We will be adding kitchens to the rooms. We're talking about updating the flooring for sure, as needed, but potentially across the board. We do add paint. Like I said, the rooms that we're going to one-bedrooms, we'll be combining those through, through the walls, I believe, right now. Every other wall is a concrete, concrete wall, block wall is what we've been told. So that should allow us to combine the two rooms in between with, should have a drywall. Let's see. We'll do upgrades as needed. For example, the heating air conditioning is currently done with this PTAC units typically see in a hotel. So we'll be going through and either making sure those are in working conditions and/or upgrading as needed. The exterior, we'll be looking at, probably doing updates as far as painting goes, whatever required landscaping comes in from the city. Potentially, we'll see what is needed in the parking lot, but we'll want to make sure that looks nice. Anything else, Stuart, that I'm not thinking of right now?
Stuart, you're muted if you're responding.
If I could just follow up on that question.
Yes.
So if, if I understand correctly, this remodel will include a kitchen or kitchenette in each one of the units?
That is correct. And based on our experience, our investment, our planned investment is substantial. For Colorado Springs, our investment was equal to actually more than the purchase price of the property. This one, we hope not to spend quite that much because the purchase price is more, but it is going to be a substantial investment from our side. So it's not just carpet and paint, let's say.
Great, thank you. Do you did, there was a mention, I believe in your application, about the, the current residents. Can you tell me how many people live there now and what will happen to them during the remodel?
Yeah, so right now, our property management team is just working on kind of taking over the property, for maybe, lack of a better term. We are planning on keeping the, our goal would be to keep as many of the tenants there that would like to stay and, you know, qualify through our, our process. We love to keep them on. That, we will have to see with our contractor if we can keep all utilities and keep the building habitable through the project. Ultimately, would be our goal is to phase it in such a way that we could get some rooms completed and for people who'd like to stay, then move them into the completed rooms and work our way through. But obviously, we'd have to comply with any requirements from the city with that as well. There's currently, I believe, about thirty, what were previously weekly or monthly, and now we're switching them over to long-term. And we like them to stay there, at least through when we start construction. And if we can navigate the process, we would like to keep the ones who'd like to stay and qualify there longer term.
Great, thank you. And I, one more question. Tell me a little bit about the, the management company. You may not have entered an agreement with a company to manage the property as a rental property, but tell me about sort of the standards you would have for a management company that would run this building.
So yeah, actually, we've already, we've had a management company at their local there to Denver, Atlas Real Estate. We've used them in the past. They manage quite a few, or a lot of, lot of buildings. They have a huge exposure up and down the front range, and I believe in some other states as well. So yeah, they've, they've been selected, and like I said, we're working with them right now to ramp up on this property.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Hearing none, we will now open the public forum on this segment. The public forum for case number WS-21-10, an application filed with Second Chance Homes Incorporated, for approval of a zone change from commercial one, C1, to mixed-use commercial for a property located at one-two-one-zero-zero West Forty-Fourth Avenue. And we ask that you limit your comments to this case. Are there any members of the public in person that would like to comment on this case?
No one has signed up.
Tammy, is there anybody online that would, is interested in commenting on this case?
No, nobody at all.
Okay, thank you. We'll give them another ten seconds, just in case they're on mute.
Yeah, the only two on Zoom are the applicants.
Thank you. If there's no one else interested in commenting on this case, I will close the public forum. I will now poll our commissioners for comments on this case. We'll start with Commissioner Kearns.
I'm all for workforce housing, so thank you very much for, for doing this. This is, this is the right thing at the right time, I think, if you ask me. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. Commissioner Leo.
Yes, I just think it's a good idea. You do have people living there that are day-to-day or week-to-week or month-to-month, and it would be more stable. It would probably be better for their living conditions if they knew that was at least a long-term home.
Commissioner Leo, Commissioner Disney.
I'm in favor of this project. I think that we do need this, more of this housing. So it's great that you're providing it, and I think it'll help stabilize that area. And thank you for the thorough presentation. Stephanie, welcome back.
Commissioner Simba.
Yeah, I do also like this, this project. I want to have, want to put three concerns out so that city council could, could hear them. It's not going to make me vote against it. But the first one is the second chance home website. I consider myself a Google nerd. I'd love to go and see what's going on with, with projects, and it just, there's nothing there that I could find. And so that causes me concern. The second thing is certainly the long-term residents. Like Commissioner Leo says, it's probably a better deal in the long run, but currently, I'd love to have a better answer on what happens with them. And then the third concern, Lauren, you sort of mentioned it. If this applicant were to leave, walk away, the current height of the building is like forty-seven feet. New building come in at mixed-use and go to ninety feet. And it's just, again, a point of concern. But again, I appreciate it. Feels like a good option. I'll be voting in approval.
Commissioner Simba, Commissioner Antol.
Yeah, I'm actually really excited to see some activity on the Forty-Fourth Corridor. I think it's an area that is need of revitalization and reinvestment. I also like the idea of repurposing an existing building, particularly for affordable housing or, you know, close to affordable housing options, because I think that's becoming rarer and rarer in our community. So yeah, just really excited to see what this can do. I think it's also a nice transition between kind of the character we see right on Forty-Fourth, as well as, you know, there still are some strong, stable neighborhoods behind it. So it's kind of that good buffer that we'll want to perpetuate as Forty-Fourth sees more and more investment. So I support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Antol. And I will limit my comments to pretty much agreeing what I've heard so far from the commissioners. I think this is an encouraging project. It does represent what I see as an optimistic view for that, that stretch of Forty-Fourth Avenue. I would, I would recommend that the developer and their business management partners that they work with on this, keep in mind that the property, how do we say it, property had a less-than-stirling reputation in the past, and that it is important for the community to see that the, under the new ownership, the property will be stable, it will maintain good order. And the appearances on the outside, I think, are a big part of it. But also, the management company ought to understand that it is very important for the building to just be an apartment building and nothing else. Oh, and I did have one question about the fountain. What's going to happen with that? The fountain in front of the building? I drove by the other day, and there is, there is a concrete fountain right by the entrance to the building. And it's a wonderful fountain, and I'd hate to see it go away.
I guess I could comment on that. I do remember seeing the fountain vaguely. We did not have any specific plans one way or the other, but we're open to recommendations. So if you like the fountain, I'm sure we could find a way to incorporate it. We hadn't, we don't have any specific plans at this point in time.
Thank you. I'm kidding, of course, but.
Yeah.
If there are any other comments or any, any other additions from staff or the applicant?
Nothing further from me? Thank you.
Okay.
Just from our side, just, we're really excited for the project and the opportunity we have here, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. So no other comments or questions? We will call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-two-one-dash-ten, request for approval of a zone change from commercial one to mixed-use commercial for property located at one-two-one-zero-zero West Forty-Fourth Avenue for the following reasons. One, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community, and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Two, utility infrastructure adequately services the property. Three, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan and consistent with the character of West Forty-Fourth Avenue. Four, the zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. And five, the criteria used to evaluate a zone change supports this request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kearns? Any other comments or questions before we call for a vote? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on the issue.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, Tammy. And we'll move on to new business. You may recall from our last meeting that two members of the planning commission asked to step down. As of this evening, appointments for the two vacant planning commission seats have not been announced. We encourage anyone living in Wheat Ridge District one or two to consider applying for planning commission. Information and application can be found on the city's website. And as we enter the holiday season, I'd like to remind everyone that the city's annual holiday celebration will be held Saturday, December fourth, from three to six-thirty PM. As usual, the festivities will take place on Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Uplum Street and High Court. We hope to see you there. Is there, I'll ask staff if there's any new business to discuss?
Just a couple updates. So dates, we will not use the December second meeting, but we will use the December sixteenth meeting for the planning commission. And then a couple other project updates. On theme with tonight's application on workforce housing, I did in passing mention, city council had a study session on Monday. It had been scheduled previously and then rescheduled, but it was about affordable housing. I think it was well-done. The slides are available on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. Probably more legible than watching the video, but the video too is available on Wheat Ridge Speaks or on the city's website if you're interested. And it will be a topic that continues to be raised. I think you'll recall that we were talking about the opportunity for affordable housing, potentially at the Lutheran campus. And we did recently learn, just a week or two ago, that the city received a grant from the state, from DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, in association with a House bill from this past year, that will give us the opportunity to create the city's first affordable housing strategy. So more specific policy discussion, direction, action plan. We all know that affordable housing has reached sort of crisis point in Wheat Ridge and the metro area. So we're really excited about receiving that grant. We will hire a consultant. We will go out to bid for that. An RFQ will hit the streets here in just a couple weeks, start of December. We will hire a consultant, hope to award that contract first quarter of 2022. And then I think it usually takes about a year, as most plans do. But the timing, that really aligns well with our ability to take advantage of some opportunities at Lutheran and hopefully elsewhere in the community. In terms of housing projects, on the other end of the spectrum, we just issued the last permits for the last building at Yarrow Gardens. It's now called West Ridge Row Homes. That's the project by Thrive at Forty-Fourth and Yarrow. So we started that maybe five or six years ago. There were two zone changes, two plats, a specific development plan. It's eighty-nine townhomes. That project won a national award, I think, related to sort of green building and design. So it's always a long project with townhomes, but it is sort of finally coming to the last phase, which is cool. And then a commercial update that we're happy to share, at Gold's, which you've seen has gotten its facelift over time. They're starting to fill in tenants, and we do know that the bowling alley will be reopened as a brewpub bowling alley. So that's exciting. I believe the person who's working on that was previously associated with Joyride. So a really great anchor over there. They've got some building permit work to do, for sure, but it's really transforming that site, the tenant mix and the improvements they've done on the outside. That's all I have for tonight. Thanks for being accommodating with the paper slides. We will get that fixed by our next meeting.
So Lauren, just a quick question. On the affordable housing strategy plan we'll be developing, are you guys looking to explore any regulatory refinements that, you know, like regulatory codes to support affordable housing?
Yeah, our expectation is that the plan would include sort of a whole menu of tools to be able to support affordable housing. So whether it's regulatory or programs or funding, carrots or sticks, sort of the whole, you know, there are, there's a long menu of options that communities can use, and we'd like that to be tailored specifically to our needs and our politics and our, our sort of policies in Wheat Ridge. But yes, I would expect that'll be part of it.
Yeah, so much growth happening here. Seems like we need to have, you know, carrots slash sticks.
Yeah.
To provide affordable housing. Okay. No news on Lucky?
No news on Lucky.
I know. Oh.
Not that I know. I haven't seen Steve Art in a couple days.
Lauren, at the corner of Thirty-Eighth and Kipling. Lauren, at the corner of 38th and Kipling, next to the Starbucks, that lot is being graded?
Yes. Yeah, I got a question about that yesterday. So the Sprouts development, there, so we know there's Sprouts, Morning Star, Senior Living, and Starbucks, and there was always a fourth pad site. They took a little while to figure out what they were going to do with it. You can imagine it's just off the beaten path, right? Not quite as visible from Kipling. We had approved a site plan administratively, I believe, that is for just a small, single-story, two-unit building. I don't know who the tenants will be. We approved that permit, actually, at the beginning of the year, and they, like many, waited until lumber prices dropped. So that's why we've just started to see dirt. I think, the thing most people will be excited about is the Starbucks parking lot won't dead-end, it will now loop through that site, so it'll make a little bit more sense over there. Yeah, I think they have envisioned, like, maybe more service-oriented, so there used to be a hair cutting salon, I believe, at that site before Sprouts came in, so potentially more service or potentially some retail. Yeah.
And I did have one, and, and if you don't have an answer to this one, if, if you could just ask around and see if you can find out on the, the warehouse project on the Frontage Road next to the car dealership?
Uh huh.
That warehouse is, is going along, it's being built, it's, it looks like the roof is on the building, it's really moving along. The widening of the road directly, I think it's Oak, directly to the east, has pretty much taken place, except at the very end, at the very south end of the road, the curb on the west side comes back in, it's not full width. Is there a reason for that, or is it going to be addressed later?
We typically try to shrink the cross, what would be a crosswalk distance, so it's fairly typical for the intersection to have narrower widths than the, than the driving street, but we can double-check the CDs. I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, we'd have to look it up. Yeah.
It, it, it just seems a little out of place. You've got a very wide, very wide side street, and then it kind of tapers off right at the end for the last 100 feet.
And you said that's on the southern portion?
Yes.
Okay. Like at Oak and the Frontage Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look it up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Since we're playing what's happening in Wheat Ridge?
Sure.
I mean, we probably shouldn't know this, but on the northwest corner next to Conoco in front of the rec center, what is that site?
Oh, the site that's under construction between Circle K and the rec center? That's a Christian Brothers.
It's what?
Christian Brothers, it's an auto, it's sort of an oil change, minor auto repair.
Oh, okay.
Yep. They have, they have really limited access from that site, so they, we couldn't tie them into the rec center drive, because those of you who go there know it gets very busy and it has that funky curve.
Yeah.
So the, the access limitations to that site, I think, really limited the variety of tenants who'd be interested in it.
Okay.
But yeah, they, if you're familiar with their stores, they're very much masonry, sort of, they're great to work with through the site design process, because that is sort of their business model to, to take their architecture, sort of a step above some of the other auto-related uses that we see.
Well, it is a tricky site, I gather.
Yeah, the topography is tricky. Yeah.
And, and speaking of automotive, it looks like we have a new automotive business located a little further up Kipling, across from the, the Enterprise Rent-A-Car. That had been closed for a few months, and it looks like there's a new business in there.
Yeah, I'm not super familiar with that one, but I bet you're right. Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else from the commission? No? Okay. Then we will ask for a motion to adjourn.
What motion will we adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for a vote?
Motion approved, six to zero.
Thank you, Tammy. We are adjourned for tonight. We'll see you on the 16th of December.